So pursuant to Governor Baker's orders, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Due to COVID-19, this meeting of the Town of Berlin Select Board will be conducted via remote participation. The Town of Berlin will use, will, will post an audio or video recording of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's webpage. The town's YouTube channel and approval minutes will be posted to mytowngovernment.org. We call the meeting to order at 6:31. We're going to enter executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2. Contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the fire chief, and will return to open session thereafter to further conduct our regular business meeting. So shall I say Keith I?
Stone I.
You're muted Scott.
No, he's not. Now he is. Now he's not. Can't hear you. Here you go.
Okay.
So that is Scott I for anyone who is only on audio. Scott has said I. Okay, um, so I'm going to close out of this open session and the board will return to conduct its regular business after you close execution.
And we have approval of the May 3rd, 2021 open session meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion or comments or questions?
So move.
Okay. And a second?
A second.
Okay. And were there any questions or comments? No?
No.
No.
Then we'll take a vote to approve. Keith I?
Stone I.
Hawkins I.
That's unanimous. We did have some correspondence, I believe, right Margaret?
Yes, so it was from Bob Blair regarding a sign that he put up in the village center on the corner of Pleasant and, and Central. So I have not gotten any answer from the building commissioner on the sign regulations. It is a fairly small sign though. I looked at it this, this morning. And I would just remind, I would just remind folks that the town zoning bylaw, I think it's Article 9, pertains to sign. So when folks want to, want to erect a temporary sign, it's always best to just run, run it by the building commissioner first and make sure that the size of the sign, the materials, the location are all compliant with the zoning bylaws.
So that, that one in particular is all set?
I believe that's all set, yes. I think I would have, Richard would have addressed that had it not been okay.
Okay.
And we also, the board also received other correspondence today regarding the school district's special legislation. I haven't had time to go through everything, but the chair of the school committee is essentially requesting a meeting with the board to discuss a possible special election to fill vacancies in the school committee until their regular biennial, biannual election. So that came today. The board should have it and Chris, I can talk with you about possibly setting up a meeting with him at agenda setting if, if you'd like.
Sure. Okay, and were we going to, did you have any further information on the communication from last week?
So Highland Ridge, we've gotten some, we've gotten some feedback which I've uploaded into the, I actually uploaded it into tonight's board agenda folder under correspondence. So the latest one we got is from the Conservation Commission. So there was a separate attachment that I uploaded today. We are still waiting to hear though from Board of Health, I believe. And I'm not sure, there might be another, there might be another party or two that we're waiting to get feedback from. But overall, there, there haven't been significant concerns expressed.
I wonder if this at a, at a future meeting belongs under sort of either new or old business to talk about in depth?
It could. Probably we ought to wait for the rest of the.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
And I think the only thing I had seen that was a concern was traffic. So far. But yes, we, we could do that at a, at a future meeting. Okay, is there any general public comment? From the general public? Janet Lamy?
Hi Janet Lamy Derby Road. I'm just curious, is there a way that you can set the screen so we can see everybody rather than just the one person talking? I think it's a setting that you guys do.
No, I think it's a setting you can do Janet.
Oh, it's not a setting. I've tried and it's, I asked Mary Arada the last time. It's, has something to do, it doesn't even give me an option.
Oh, okay.
Being on my end.
It could be because it's a webinar.
I think it is.
Yeah.
It's really hard to, to like get, I don't know, it's nice when you can see everybody's faces and kind of feel.
It is. I've gone to, for example, like, well, let's say, for example, if I went to one of your finance committee meetings, I wouldn't be able to see who all was there.
Right.
Unless you promoted me to, you know, one of the people, like one of the people on the board.
Correct. It's okay. Never mind. I asked Mary Arada the last time and she was able to fix it, but it's okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Did I put my hand down?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. If there's no more public comment, then we'll move on to our joint meeting with the select board and the cemetery commissioners to appoint on an interim basis to fill the vacancy on the cemetery commission until the election, May 24th. Is there anyone that needs promoted?
Barry is already up.
Okay.
And I think he's with Bob.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Hi there.
Hi, hi there.
So this is, do you want to fill us in on the background for the public anyway, Margaret or Barry?
Of course Ruth Wheeler has been on the, on the cemetery commission for six years and she passed away recently. So we have a vacant. And right now that leaves me in some cases, it leaves us in a situation where we really need two people, you know, another person just so we can sign bills and stuff. So I was talking to Brenna Ewing of 227 Pleasant Street last week on a wholly different matter and I happened to mention that we had this vacancy and she said, well, I like cemetery. So I subsequently had another conversation with her and told her about what it, what the commitments generally are as the cemetery commissioner. And she is interested and would, would accept the point. I nominate Brenna Ewing to the, to fill the vacancy on the cemetery commission until the, the election that's coming up. And we'll have to have her as the write-in candidate for the election.
Okay. So we're doing this as one vote for all of us, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So Barry, you've made a motion? Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. And we'll take, we'll take a roll called vote. Keith I?
Stone I.
Hawkins I.
Agar I. File I.
Okay, makes it unanimous.
Yay.
Congratulations to Brenna.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right.
It's about as fast as we do things.
Mm-hmm. You're well rehearsed on those right now, so.
Yes. All right, then we have a general department update from our Highway and Facilities Superintendent Dave Smith. Is he here?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just a little slow.
Oh, there's the beard. It's back.
Beard.
That once-a-year beard.
A once-a-year beard.
All right. We're doing good. How about you?
All right. I guess we can finally put winter to bed, so I'm doing better.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So we just, we'll go over the old business. I guess winter operations did continue last month. We had to do one more storm.
Okay.
National Grid is, I think, done with the tree removal. I'm not sure. They might have one or two more with the, they have to come back and do crane work, but I'm not positive. But they did a very nice job. I think total was, was like 110 trees they removed.
Wow.
Yes, quite a bit. Impact to budgets as far as our winter operations, there's a little bit of money left in snow and ice. I went ahead and ordered a new snowplow for one of the, one of the loaders because the one we have is probably 30 plus years old. And it's getting tired. So with the money that was left over, I did go ahead and order a new plow. So we'll be in good shape for next winter. And new business, we did some tree removal on Marlboro Road with Hudson Light. There's a section of that road that Hudson Power and Light has utility lines on. They supplied us with a bucket truck and an operator. We did all the groundwork. So we did two days of that, which helped them and helped us. So it's, it was a nice joint effort. And the guys are on, on, ongoing picking up the logs that National Grid's crew has left. We finally filled the two vacant positions. You met those two young gentlemen last, last time around. It's working out pretty well. They're, they're nice, aggressive young guys. And it's, it's nice to have some, some young bodies in the building. We had our tree crew come in. We did some more tree removal for two days, Crosby, Gates, South and West. And I'm hoping to get them back in again next week and do at least one more day. It was starting to get a handle on the trees. The phone isn't ringing with a lot of complaints, so that's nice. I mean, there's still plenty to come down, but most of the problem trees are, are either, have been taken down or on the schedule to be taken down very shortly. Sweeping, we started with the sweeping operation and the cleaning of the intersections. We've still got a little bit more to do that with the, the snow and the debris that we push in the corners. Mowing, that started on the, mostly South Commons, but we've had to make a, a complete round all over town. We did some work at the cemetery for taking some brush. Once again, we had one more snowstorm with plowed. I had two guys come in for Earth Day. We picked up an exorbitant amount of trash that the residents were kind enough to put on the side of the road. But it was crazy how busy they were. Let's see, I met with a contractor to go over the relocation of a few of the town offices and cutting in some more windows and doorways in a couple of the offices to make it more user-friendly for the public when they come in, so they don't have to directly go into the offices. We can have access from the hallways. Met with the air, company estimating the air handler on the roof. Police station locker room, I met with a company, we're gonna go and put, I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but the Town of Hudson gave the Town of Berlin an evidence locker that goes in the wall so that when, when the police have some evidence they need to secure, they can put it in this vault type of thing. And once it goes in, it can't come out, so there's no access. Kind of like the money drop at the, at the bank type of thing. So they're coming in the 19th to, we're gonna cut that wall out and install that, that evidence locker. Tom's been waiting for like a year and a half for me to do that, so I'm finally getting her out to it. The tank in the fire station was pumped once again. That's a containment tank when they, when they wash the vehicles and the, the ice and snow from the vehicles melts. It goes into this containment tank that gets pumped two or three times a year. I went over to, to Boylston and met with Steve Marrow. He's the, the highway superintendent over there and he's also in charge of the cemetery. So I, I bugged him, tapped him for some information on how he manages and runs his cemetery. Very eye-opening. Margaret ordered some benches. We assembled those and put them down at the village. Not sure if you've seen those, we placed them strategically. And I brought a raised garden bed and assembled that to the garden, Unity Garden Center. Library septic. I met with that contractor. They started that job today. I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but we're going to town with that too.
There, there was a postman on Facebook about it.
Yeah.
Positive one.
So Dave, when, when, when the trees come down, National Grid cuts, cuts them down, do you guys have to pick up the trunks?
So we don't have to. It's an arrangement I made with National Grid to get more bang for the buck. Anything that was sizable, I told them they could drop and leave as long as it was out of the way and we just would go around. So I'm not sure. Hindsight, I'm not sure if I would do it again. I think I would let them do it all, but like I say, it, you know, they have a budget to work in. So we were able to get a little bit more time with them in town by us handling the trucks.
So I know there was someone who asked me, they, they live on Central Street and there was a, a couple of really big trees. And I, and, and she wondered if someone was gonna come get them.
We'll get there.
Okay, maybe you're, maybe you already have. I haven't been by in a while, so. Just, just curious, who picks up those huge things?
Jimmy, Jimmy and Fred.
All right. Are there any questions for Dave?
I got none. Just, no. Just wanted to duplicate Bob, Mr. Blair. Is he still in the audience? Yep, there he is. He just put a note out on Facebook giving a giant shout out to Dave and Jim and Fred for Earth Day and quite a few positive comments. So you know, Dave, thanks for, thanks for tapping your guys to go around and pick up Berlin trash. I'm a little bit saddened that I'm starting to see it again. Saw a giant pizza box and all its nastiness behind the little building down at the, at the railroad crossing on Linden Street, which seems to be.
Oh, that's fun to clean up there.
Ah, drove by the other day and I'm like, oh, can't make public comments because I'm being recorded, you know, and some other spots around town, so. But again, thank you for sending your guys around. It greatly helped.
It is discouraging. I know I came in Monday morning on Lancaster Road the day after the Earth Day cleanup and there was more rubbish where, where the parking areas for the conservation, it, it's terrible.
Yep, made me sad, made me sad, but also made me happy that you guys were there to help. So thank you.
Yeah, it was a great effort. All right, well, thank you Dave.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Hi Dave.
Oh, I thought there was another part to the report.
Yeah, I did too.
Oh, was there? Did we miss one?
He wanted to share.
Huh?
There he is, he's back.
Here he is, Dave.
Oh, he's on mute.
You wanted me back?
Yeah.
We wanted me back.
So I regretfully, I regretfully accepted Dave's notice of resignation effective July 9th this morning. So. Dave wants to pursue other opportunities. Dave, would you like to speak to it or if you don't feel comfortable, you don't have?
No, I don't, I feel fine doing it. I, I have the opportunity to do, do something else and I don't know if it's the right decision or not, but I'm gonna do it. So you know, there's no, no reflection of town. I love, I love working with the town. The, the reason I gave, I've given you two months so that we get through the fiscal year. Hopefully we can bring somebody in and get them up to speed to get them into the next fiscal year. And, and you know, I'll be available if there's, you know, people have questions or they need some assistance with something. I don't know, I just, I have an opportunity to do something, I'm gonna do it. I, I'm gonna roll the dice and here we go.
Good for you.
Well.
You've been great for the town. I wish you good luck on it. I hope it pays off for you.
Well, thank you. But yeah, no, no, no ill or bad reflection upon the town. Like I say, I, I wanna make it, you know, a smooth transition as I can. And you know, there's some projects that I've started I want to finish. I don't want to be that person that left, you know, loose ends and unfinished business, so.
Well, Dave will make the most of this next 60 days. How's that?
Dave, will you promise to come back at Christmas and decorate again?
I think the guys would appreciate that.
That was the best chuckle of the day, Dave. Thank you. Thank you when we saw that one.
Well, we wish you the best of luck, Dave.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you.
Yep, yep, we do.
All right.
All right.
We'll let you go for now. Thanks Dave.
All right, thank you Dave.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if he wanted to talk about that or not.
I, I sort of, I mean, as much as it's sort of new to all of us as well, having him say it himself with the things that, you know, I, I think helps the, what will ultimately be rumor control in town where people will say, who knows what they're gonna say. And so yeah, it allows a recorded from his own words and, and and then we have our moments to figure out, okay, now what? Cause he's been really good for the town.
Yeah. All right, well, Margaret? Can you do your town administrator report in seven minutes?
I will, I, I will. I didn't, I usually highlight, you know, I usually make note of the highlights and I just didn't today, so I'll just jump through real quick. First of all, Berlin's two-week positivity rate is down to 1.97%, so we're really staying low. It's, it's great. Today was our, I'll call it our soft reopening, our soft full reopening of town offices and I saw one customer, I saw one customer come in, everything worked out great. I observed closely. They came in with their mask. They stayed out in the, in the common area. So I think it's going to, it's going to go well and, and we'll keep watching this, through this transition. Today also marks the, the Commonwealth's next step of the Phase Four reopening, so. I mean, I'm not gonna go through everything, but certain large venues, amusement parks, theme parks, outdoor water parks, they can open at 50% capacity. Road races and other outdoor amateur athletic events are allowed to take place with, under certain conditions and only after submitting safety plans to a local, to the local Board of Health. Stadia and arenas are, are allowed to increase to 25% capacity. Youth and youth sports, it's, it's nice to see that youth sports are starting up again here in Berlin. They're allowed to, they're allowed to operate now. And then singing is permitted indoors with distancing requirements. Grocery stores and retail stores are encouraged to have hours of operation for seniors, but are no longer required to offer those hours for seniors. Additional changes are anticipated on May 29th and again on August 1st. So you can go to my town administrator report for some summarized information and for links to the information on the state's website. Now, we know, we know that Marlborough, the Courtyard Marriott in Marlborough is open for COVID vaccinations. They are now open for walk-ins. So anyone who would like to go to the Courtyard Marriott during their, their hours of operation, I've listed them on the, on my TA report. That's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Tuesday, Thursday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. You can now go there for walk-in, walk-in vaccinations, or you could still make an appointment if you'd prefer. And the long-awaited Neshoba Valley Devon's Regional Vaccination Collaborative has opened a site at Devon's at the Clear Path for Veterans New England Building. In Devon's, I do not have details on the hours yet, but vaccination appointments for that location and other locations can be scheduled at vaxfinder.mass.gov. We have, I'm jumping down to HR and benefits. The board has received the consultant's final draft employee, I'm sorry, the employee policy manual. It's a draft. Personnel Committee is going to start diving in, in work sessions beginning on May 20th to start making their way through and making updates that they feel are, would be recommended for the Town of Berlin. As you know, the, the manual is 100 pages long, so they're starting with a really comprehensive document and now need to tweak it for the unique needs of Berlin. The Fire and EMS Collective Bargaining Agreement is very, very close to ratification. In fact, I'll be recommending that to the board tonight. The union has voted to rat, has, has ratified it. Police collective bargaining is ongoing. COVID expense reporting is, is ongoing. Dave mentioned the library septic project. The parking lot resurfacing project bid reissuance is Monday, May 17th. The requisite notices will have been posted prior to the reissuance and the bid deadline will be June 8th. I have paused the transition from Viewpoint Cloud to iWork because of some concerns that were raised by town council with respect to the payment processor's terms and conditions. There were several concerns raised by our town council and those must be addressed before we make a transition. So I'm in communication with iWork now to note the list of concerns that town council had on those terms and conditions. Meanwhile, we remain with Viewpoint Cloud until such time as we're able to change. Um, let's see. I don't know. Tonight you'll have the, you'll have your, your draft statement on River Bridge Development Agree, on the River Bridge Development Agreement article and a final draft of town meeting motions. Again, for final review, we've got to get that printed, 400 copies of it printed and in bags for Saturday's town meeting. I have updated the draft notice to proceed on the Bullard House weatherization. It's going through historical commission reviews now. And I'll leave it at that. Just a reminder, annual town meeting session one is Saturday, this coming Saturday, May 15th. Start time is 1:00 PM and it'll be outside Berlin Memorial School, just like it was last year. There will be a session two, Monday, May 17th, 6:30 PM, again, outside Berlin Memorial School. And that's all I have for now.
Okay.
Margaret, quick question. I saw it go, wasn't buying an email, but never saw a response. Is Berlin doing anything for Memorial Day? Do you know if there's any festivities that are planned?
I have not gotten a response. I emailed Roger to ask about that and I don't think I've seen a response from him just yet.
Roger replied to me directly saying that they are planning some ceremonies at each of the cemeteries. So something small at each of the cemeteries.
But no parade or anything?
Yeah, it was like a one sentence. I could look for it. It was a short email.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had. Thanks.
Okay.
Starting at 9:00 AM. We are planning a short ceremony at each of the cemeteries of the Albee School of Memorial Day, starting at 9:00 AM.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. We were ready to move on then, I guess, to our public hearing, Earthworks Permit Public Hearing. We'll open the hearing. And this is for Luis Santos, who's the owner and petitioner of Route 12 Auto Sales. The premises is at the end of Old Central Street. And this is for permission to import 1,276 cubic yards of earth and disruption of 20, or I'm sorry, 9,600 square feet of property for proposed new or used car or truck dealership, up to 10 vehicles or other allowed use. for proposed new or used car or truck dealership, up to 10 vehicles or other allowed use. Um, Luis, I think you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
How are you guys doing?
Good, good. So, um, Luis, tell us about your plan.
Um, well, first thing, you know, it's, um, filling, you know, doing some work to the property. And, um, you know, after that, you know, whatever step that he needs to be, you know, a step at a time.
Okay. Um, then, go ahead, Margaret.
Yes, uh, um, Luis, what is the, what is going, this is relevant to our like-kind soils by law, which we'll get into later. But what is the intended use for the property?
The intention is, you know, to use as a commercial, uh, as it is a commercial, uh, property. So, you know, um, what you guys allow me to, you know, do there, if it's a dealer, you know, if it's built something, you know, then build, um, you know, a garage.
Okay, that, through the chair, that's, that's an important note because, um, with respect to the like-kind soils by law, uh, this is the, where you're discussing, I know you're discussing the earthwork, uh, by law, but other, under the like Kyle, uh, like-kind soils by law, um, there are some, uh, limitations, um, that are listed under that by law. So in other words, if you're bringing in fill and you're going to be constructing a building, the relationship between the amount of fill, the cubic feet of fill and the size of the construction itself, the, the structure must be a one-to-one relationship. So it's, again, I'm jumping a little bit forward, but under the like-kind soil by law, those additional limitations will kick in. Sorry, Chris, I just, I wanted to.
That's okay. Um, so the lot is about 10,000 square feet?
Uh, it's actually, I think 12 something.
Okay. And, um, uh, like Margaret said, there are some other things that would kick in depending on what you decided you were going to use this for. Um, the, that there may need to be a special permit or variance, um, which would be needed from our zoning board of appeals. And, um, I think that I, in reading the, um, the building commissioner's letter from, I believe it was back in August of last year, um, that it wouldn't be a la- land that could not be, uh, a contractor's yard. Um, so, um, Margaret, I don't know if you have a recommendation on all of this or if the board has any questions?
Well, I, I get, oh, I'm sorry. Through the chair, I, I'd like to hear more from Luis about his intended plans for the, for the parcel. So, um, yeah.
Yeah, it, it doesn't seem very specific. It seems just very general, um, to the point of whatever you're allowing me to do. Um, so I, I know that I would, uh, like to hear specifics on what that parcel is going to be used for.
Yeah, I hear him.
I think he's talking off camera.
Oh.
He's looking at somebody else.
Can you hear me? You can hear me.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, guys. Uh, I was just mentioning to someone that I'm in a meeting.
So, so no, Luis, I, um, I know between Margaret and I, um, I know for me that I'd like to hear specifics as to what you're going to do, not, um, you know, it's, it's zoned commercially. So whatever you allow me to do on that, but is it going to be, are you, uh, selling cars? Are you putting a garage up there, uh, to repair cars? Is it a storage area? So what would that land be used for?
Like you said, you know, uh, what, what, what you guys allow me to do, you know, uh, I have a dealer in Lamis there. You know, and, um, so if, 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 if it's a dealer, you know, if you guys allow me to build something, you know, then, you know, I'll, I'll build something and that's, that's pretty much all I can say, you know, um, it's what you guys allow me to do.
But what do you want to do?
Well, what I want to do is, you know, build a garage, you know?
To repair?
Yes, repair.
Just a general service garage, not selling of gas or anything, or come and change my oil, just fix my car. It's squeaking?
Correct. Yeah, auto repair and dealer.
Okay. Margaret, is there some things that Luis might need to know?
Yeah, um, Luis, what I'm gonna do is, um, first of all, after you met with the earthworks committee, I know that they recommended that you reach out to various, um, boards and committees in town that have certain jurisdiction over various things. Have you talked with the conservation commission or the planning board or the zoning board of appeals?
Conservation, I spoke, uh, it was the first one that I spoke because, um, I spoke to someone about cutting the trees down and they recommend to check with the conservation if they're, you know, if, if, if there needed to be a license to cut it down. So I called the conservation and this, and they told me that if it's on the left side of, uh, 495, you know, uh, on the border of Hudson, it, there's no wetland there. You know, but if it was on the other side, there would be. So it would be diff, it would be, it would have been different.
So Khan Khan hasn't actually done a site walk yet or a site visit. I do know that you had some wetlands. Um, you had someone weigh in on a wetlands, uh, it was a wetland review you had done. Um, I saw that, um, but Khan Khan, to your knowledge, hasn't been on the site yet to actually view the site conditions, correct?
Uh, no, I don't think anyone, you, you mean from the, from, from Berlin town?
From, from Berlin, um, from Berlin's conservation commission.
Yeah, I don't know. They haven't been there as far as I know.
So we think at, at, at a minimum, and, and then there's the board of health, um, with respect to any kind of proposed septic and well, to see if those, the site conditions there, um, would be, um, you know, would be acceptable to put the, that infrastructure. So there are going to be, I think what I'll do, what I'd like to do, um, you know, if it's okay with you and the board, um, I'd like to make some recommendations on who you should follow up with. And also give you some information on the like-kind soil by law, which is absolutely going to be relevant to this. Um, so you can kind of see what that particular by law will require. So, um, so essentially my recommendation for the board tonight, I know you probably have more discussions, would be to continue, um, continue this hearing, uh, pending, um, local review for compliance with general by law 19, Article 19, like-kind soil by law, and also, um, encouraging the applicant, um, to contact, um, local reviewers who he's not had a chance to, um, communicate with yet. And then the board getting the feedback from those local reviewing.
Okay. Are there, are there any other questions from the board? Whoops, Scott, are you on mute?
I am. I had noise going on in the background. Sorry. Um, there are not a lot of butters to this property, correct? Cause 495 is one side of the property. And Old Central Road is another side of the property, which is a, it's added, that's at the dead end. So there's not a lot of butters we have to worry too much about, correct?
Correct.
Butters were notified of this public hearing. And I'm not sure, I'm not in my screen right now to see how many there were actually known.
Five, right?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, five.
And, and we've not heard from any one of them, correct? Pro, archon?
My knowledge, no.
Okay. We, we need to discuss the recommendation then, um, from Margaret or hear a motion?
In order to continue the hearing, the board will have to set a date, um, for that. So it, there would have to be a date specific. We'd need to give ourselves enough time to actually go through the materials. So.
If, uh, I could say one thing, um, um, the review uh, authorities in the town of Berlin, if you could please, uh, put the name and number of contact person for Louis. Um, that would really help, um, because we've had general recommendations to talk. And I think we have, I think he has attempted to contact these authorities, but, um, what we need are specific contacts. I think maybe because of COVID or what have you, we haven't been able to contact these people, uh, or know who he should contact. Is that true, Louis, or? So I, it'd be very helpful if we could have the name and, and, uh, contact of
Yes.
exact personnel that Louis should be, uh, in touch with.
We can definitely provide that to you.
And then you're, yeah. Sorry, from, from your plans, I can see sort of where the story is going. I, I have it, I don't have, and I think this also goes a little bit to what, what, uh, Peg and Margaret said, I don't have a good sense of what this will look like when it's done. Is it, is it just going to be, you know, are all the trees going away and this is going to be a flat piece of dirt?
Right.
Uh, is there going to be some, you know, landscape to go with? Are some trees you're going to be able to save? Is there going to be a building and how big is the building going to be? Uh, those are the,
Right.
the, and I'd like to have a sense of what it's going to look like when it's done. Uh, although it's funny, this is a very detailed drawing, but just telling me a lot of the stuff that where the, like the, the, the slope of the soil is going to be.
Well, and I think that they, he would need that in order to go before planning and ZBA and especially conservation, they're going to want everything mapped out, every bush, every tree that's getting pulled up, that's getting put back in. So, um, definitely more specific. Uh, you know, beyond I, you know, I want to sell cars or I want to repair cars. I think we need a very detailed plan as to what he's looking to do, when he's looking to do it by, as Scott said, size of the building, driveway, number of cars that would be there either for repair or for sale. So, um, you know, truly there's a lot of detail that's just not here that, uh, yeah, I'm not comfortable making any decision, but to, uh, extend the hearing and give Mr. Santos time to swing around to all the boards.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Santos, um, contacted the conservation commission. And that's where he got authorization to at least begin his, uh, um, tree removal. Uh, I, I haven't been a part of that other than doing the boundary survey, but I, is that true, uh, Luis?
Yes, that's correct.
I spoke with the, um, the Khan Khan chair, um, this evening, um, because I hadn't seen an actual, um, I hadn't seen their actual comments returned yet. He did inform me, um, that two members of the conservation commission did walk by the property, but hadn't actually gone on to the property. So, um, I'd like a little more detail. I think the board needs a little more detail from the conservation commission as to exactly where they're at with it.
Agreed.
Yeah, because, uh, I think Luis began, I haven't been on the site either, but I, I believe Louis has begun, uh, at least tree removal. And, um, having that go ahead from the conservation and the, uh, environmental scientists that went through clearing the, uh, wetland issue. So he has begun that as far as a proposed structure, any of that, I think all, all that Luis was beginning was a clearing and a leveling, uh, to at least park a few vehicles. That's all I was aware of. Um, and then if he could acquire the parcel next door, um, that was where things were going. Um, so if I was to speak anything on behalf of Louis, uh, we did a boundary survey and then we did a, uh, a grading plan for the excavation, um, board, because that seemed to be the first step, uh, in the process. So basically that first step that we saw that we were, I think, even directed to do was that excavation, uh, board. And so that's where, that's where we went with it. And that's why the plan is as bare bones as it is, basically a stormwater plan for, uh, excavate, or not really any excavation, just in, in, uh, just in, just bringing fill in. So, but we didn't, so I didn't see anything about site plan, uh, you know, that would have to be, you know, as far as proposed, uh, requirements for, you know, vegetation, replacement, et cetera, all that. Yeah, we'd have to see what the town would, what the town requires or would like to see on that particular site. And before I would even begin another plan, you know? I guess we just satisfied the excavation committee's, um, request. So that's what we did there. And then the conservation, so he began his tree removal. That's where the, the site stands right now.
I think it's going to be, through the chair, I think it's going to be important to have the zoning board of appeals weigh in on this, given the fact that the non-con, it's a non-conforming lot and it would require a variance. Um, so I do think, and especially where, um, Mr. Santos is considering purchasing, uh, the abutting parcel. Um, I don't know that we can tell how that would change. Um, you know, the, the lot proportions and things like that. So I do think that this, it's probably going to be worth another visit to the building commissioner, uh, then potentially to the zoning board of appeals and the other bodies to really get into some of the, some of the details.
Right. I'd like to figure out, and I don't have a great answer. It's like how to make sure they, that they don't get stuck in sort of a catch 22 where they don't want to purchase the land next door, the building next door to discover they can't do what they want to do. But there, we're not going to let them proceed until they own the lot next door. And so I'd like to, I, I don't know a great answer. I don't, and I don't think I'm going to find it in the next 10 minutes or so, but, but, uh, I'd like to be able to figure out a way that we can give some good direction on a path forward that, uh, sort of, you know, preserves their capital so they're not spending money on something that doesn't need to be happening. Um, and still lets them sort of have some provide way forward.
Yeah. Go ahead, Margaret. I can see you want to say.
I just think, I, I think based on what Scott said, the appropriate first step is going to be to go back to building commissioner, Richard Hanks. Have a discussion with him. If you're considering buying that other parcel, you can let him know how far you've, um, how far you've gone. Uh, uh, as far as with the earthworks board and, um, this parcel itself. Uh, but he may be able to, he may be able to provide additional guidance to you, um, in moving forward. So, and I'm happy to meet with you as well. Um, we actually reopened, um, today for in-person business. So if you'd like to schedule an appointment with us, we could both sit with you um, and talk about next steps.
And the, uh, secretary for the zoning board of affi- appeals is also the secretary for our building and commissioner. So she might be able to shed some light on the process for the ZBA.
Uh, can I say something?
Sure.
Um, the, I think it was last week I was, I was there dropping off the, the, the pinks, the, the green, the green cards. And, um, you know, uh, as you guys mentioned, you know, about the, the house next door, you know, that, the, the way it's, the way it's there. Um, it's wide open. Uh, it's very dangerous the way it's there, you know, uh, usually I've seen usually when a, when a house burns down, you know, they, they close, you know, the, the windows, you know, the doors, you know, with plywood's. You know, and, um, what I'm trying to do here, you know, is just doing, doing, you know, start with doing the work to the property, you know, so I can get it to how you guys, you know, want it. You know, um, I do plan, you know, in the future, I have already tried contact, um, the owner many times through his, um, wife or ex-wife, you know, through his sister and, um, never, never heard back, never heard from the, from the owner of the house, you know, rob, rob something. I've, I've, I know as far as they own, he owns. Back tax on the property, you know. I really don't know what's going on with him, you know. I don't see why not, he doesn't want to get a hold of me, you know. Also to mention, you know, his septic system, he built inside of my property.
What's that, that's a, Margaret? I would say that that we, that needs to be run by the board of health. But the board of health has jurisdiction over, you know, septic systems and, and local personal, you know, individual wells, residential wells. So that's something that is going to have to be brought to the board of health's attention. How long ago did that happen, Louise?
What, the septic? I don't know, you know, probably when they built the, the house, I haven't really looked into when, when that, when that, when that ranch was built.
Okay. Yeah, so I, I mean, there are, there are a number of other steps that, that need to be, another, a number of other contacts that need to, to happen.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't understand how border half hasn't been there, hasn't been at the house yet. You know, it's been over a year, the house burned.
Yeah.
So is it a good idea to possibly have. Louis to meet with you, Margaret and Richard? Maybe something could be set up. And then in the meantime, I think the board most likely will continue this hearing.
We have to continue to a specific date, so we, we have to think about what is not so far in the future that it's problematic. But also not so quickly that all we're doing when we meet is postponing it again.
Right. Do, do we want to do? Like a month out, would that give enough time?
So a month out would be good because you, some of these boards and committees only meet sporadically. Zoning Board of Appeals, for example, we, you'd want to, you'd want to have a chance to really talk with them about your, your plans, so.
Yeah, zoning, their next meeting is May 12th, so you'd never get on the. Agenda, I doubt it, planning.
Not planning. Board of Health or?
Board of Health. May 18th, so that's next week. Yeah, so I would probably say end of June and I would probably circle back around to conservation as well. And talk to them as well, their next meeting is the 19th. So if I had to guess, I'd probably say the beginning of June, maybe to get on everybody's agenda and get us feedback. So.
I would suggest to the board then, you're, the board is posted for June 21st and 28th. So one of those two dates.
Okay.
I would suggest, I would suggest the 21st.
Yep.
Okay. Do I hear a motion then? Or, well, actually, is there anything else that Louis or Rod want to say?
So I can't do anything at the moment to the property.
Do anything in terms of what?
I think there was, as I was a question to us, I think.
It was, my next step was pull these stumps out.
Let's, Louise, let me suggest that we set up a meeting with Richard and me. We can talk, we can talk about, you know, the things that you're working on. You know, something that you cannot proceed with at the moment is bringing in Phil. That, that can't happen at the moment. So why, why don't I set up a meeting with Richard and me and invite you to come in? We can talk, I, we, I could probably schedule this within a week. So, okay, and we could talk about what you're looking at doing.
Right, so again, I gotta wait until then if I wanted to pull these stumps.
I don't know the site conditions, I can't answer that, I'm so sorry, I can't answer it.
Typically, Louis, typically it's. It would be good to wait. And, you know, seems like they're, they're being very accommodating in the sense of, you know. Want to make sure the steps are taken to give you the. The best avenue to go forward and, you know.
I think probably Margaret, Margaret's very good and she'll be getting back in touch with you perhaps tomorrow.
I will.
And let you know when they, you can meet with her and the building commissioner, Richard Hanks.
It's great that this COVID thing's easing up, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
And based on some of the information that you've given tonight, Louise, I can share, you know, I can share certain information with Conservation Commission. You know, about stump removal to see if maybe they could reach out to you about getting on to the site and taking a look. So maybe we can have other wheels in motion too.
Whatever we can do to help, absolutely.
Okay. Should I be asking, should I be asking the public if there, is there any public that may have a question or a comment? Since, no?
I don't see anybody with their hand up.
Okay. Then did we have a motion?
To delay the hearing until the 21st of June?
At spec, and specified time.
Do we want to just do 7:30 again?
Yeah.
All right, so that's the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, then we'll take a vote, Keith, I.
Stone I.
Hawkins I.
Okay, that's unanimous. And. I'm sure Margaret will be in touch with you, Louis, tomorrow. And. I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
I will be in touch with a, with a couple of proposed dates and times for a meeting with Richard and me, okay?
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
All right. Moving on to old business and. Our draft select board statement on the River Bridge articles. Was this, was this in the folder, Margaret?
I'm sorry.
She mailed it out to us.
I emailed it out to you, I meant to put it up in the folder and then I meant to do it again a second time.
Which is weird, because, because normally I only read things through the folder and this one I happened to read with the email came out, so.
Oh, boy.
When did the email come out, I don't even?
6:18.
Okay. Well, I haven't had a chance to read it, so I don't know if we want to.
Oh, I sent it out the other day, actually. But, um, oh, go ahead, Scott, I'm sorry.
It sounded so formal, it's everything that I, it really does say everything. I couldn't find a way, I wanted to find a fairer way to say it more informally, but it is our formal statement, so maybe there's not a way to do that. That just is. That, that we, we, we'd rather a more comprehensive approach and that we don't think they're in the best interest of the town at the moment. Because it's all sort of one-sided, it might be the place we ultimately get, but no.
I mean, what I liked, yeah, I mean, what I liked is that it's very specific, Margaret, you know, you went through so no one could say, oh, I'm not quite sure why they passed it over. You know, it's one, two, three, cha, 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 you know, not in the best interest, you know, we did this in years past, so. Again, I'm, I know Chris hasn't had a chance to go through it, but.
All right, so I'll resend, I'll resend it for the board's review. I think the board's going to be posted half an hour before the start of town meeting on Saturday. So you can certainly, you could certainly go through it again on Saturday for Monday night session.
Right.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, right, yes.
Okay.
I sent it initially on the, on the 7th, but I'm forwarding it to you all again.
Yep.
We'll upload it to tonight's folder.
Might be one of those emails I just put left us unread and going to go back and didn't have a chance.
Yeah, I, I now star any of those I want to go back to, whether they're read or unread, just so that I could.
Yeah.
Because I have somebody starred, that doesn't always help.
I know. I'm sorry.
I have to, but again, yes, like Scott mentioned, it, it is pretty formal, the board can, you know, the board can tweak it however, however you want. But it does contain, does contain most of the information that would be needed.
Okay, all right. Then we'll plan to put that on the agenda for Saturday morning or Saturday.
Saturday afternoon.
Oh, no, is it really?
Spot.
La, 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 la.
La, 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 it's six days away, it's fine.
All right.
We also have to venture our neighborhood that morning, and so I'm kind of hoping that the day goes. Rain will start at 5:15 after we're all done, you know.
Yeah, don't they, don't, isn't, aren't you doing a yard sale, like a?
We're doing our give your stuff away day, yes.
Yes, and, and why are they doing on town meeting day, huh?
Because we set the date six months ago before nobody was done, but very little happens after. We start at 9:00 AM, we should be all done, most of us are planning on going to town meetings, so.
Okay.
The only other thing I, excuse, I'm sorry, excuse me, through the chair, the only other thing I have are the now revised draft final motions. Barry weighed in on, with some comments and proposed edits, and so I've incorporated those, those are in your folder.
Okay.
And we're going to have to be copying those tomorrow or Wednesday, that's my hope.
Okay.
If you haven't copied, Margaret, I can come down on Wednesday night and stuff.
Sounds like fun.
Well, you know, I put all the other boxes together and build them upstairs, so let me know, we'll just undo the box and have a stuffing party.
The 400 bags are already in the works, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Gosh.
Oh, yeah, I felt like I was knitting, putting the lanyards through all the, the voting devices. And then taking all the Purell bottles and throwing them in the bags too, so.
All right. Well, then we'll move on to. Updates on our nuisance dog complaint.
It appears I've, I've uploaded an update on that to your agenda folder. The complainant has withdrawn her complaint, provided things keep improving. The animal control officer has made contact with both the complainant and the. And the dog owners that were allegedly nuisance dogs. The dog owners have purchased an electric fence and it is being installed. And, and that was what precipitated the complainant to, to express that she did not need to go forward at this point. With a nuisance, or did she, she did not intend to go forward with a nuisance dog hearing. So I, we were, we are going to be looking at, as you can see in, in Chief's email. We're going to be looking to make sure that the installation of the electric fence proceeds. And that all dogs in their neighborhood are behaving themselves.
Right. I think also the, the current owner is taking other steps that while the fence is being installed, they're not, the dogs are not wandering as, as much. And, and both parties agree that it's been less of a problem over the last week or two.
Yeah. Well, that's good.
Yep, hopefully it stays on that track and it will be resolved.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda is the fire and EMS collective bargaining agreement.
Yeah. So the fire and EMS union, local 5298 IAFF. Have ratified, have voted to ratify the memorandum of agreement on the collective bargaining agreement for the fire and EMS department. And also a side letter of agreement pertaining to. Pertaining to wages for the fire marshal position, because those are not addressed inside the collective bargaining agreement. And my recommendation this evening is for the board to also vote to ratify the collective bargaining agreement. This collective bargaining agreement will be effective on July 1st, so the very start of fiscal year 22.
So do we need the motion to ratify the agreement and also the side letter?
That's correct, yes, both.
Okay. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
And is there anything to be said before?
I want to thank both the, the town's negotiating team, which is Margaret and Chris, and the union's negotiating team. That, that I think were sort of frank and honest, it got us to an agreement that everyone liked relatively quickly. I was very happy to see that.
Very quickly. Okay. Then we'll take a vote, Keith, I.
Stone I.
Hawkins I.
That's unanimous.
We're going to have to have original signatures applied to these, so I will have, Chris, you're the only one signing the MOA. All three of you will sign the side letter and the collective bargaining agreement, so we'll prepare those and have them ready for your signatures.
Okay, just let us know when they're ready. Okay. The next thing on the agenda is to approve the release of the section 15 package store license. For Nerea. We have gotten the ABCC approval. Of transfer for the, and is this for the manager too, or no?
It, it lists the new, the new manager, so they've accepted the change of manager.
Again, manager is Heather Iifrodi? I thought she was the, the first one, the first manager. No?
She's the new, she is the new one.
All right.
She's the one who was on a walk.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. All right, so that's what we're doing here, we have an approval of release of the section 15 package store license for Nerea. And the manager change, I believe. Okay. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
And seconded.
Okay, we'll take a vote, Keith, I.
Stone I.
Hawkins I.
And that's a vote.
Yay.
So let's see, new business, summer seasonal laborer job description.
Yes, so Dave, and unfortunately I didn't think to, to ask him while he was here with the board earlier. But Dave said that through Bay State Roads, the department could get a couple of. Of young, I call them youngsters, everybody's a youngster to me. You know, some, some, some young people to actually perform basic seasonal laborer duties. What I've given you in your, in your drive for tonight, or your folder for tonight, is a draft seasonal landscaper position description. The Personnel Committee did vote to approve this, subject to reformatting it into the town standard format. I just haven't had a chance to do that yet, but that is why the position description is here before the board. Because this contains the, the primary duties and qualifications for the position. It just needs to be formatted in our standard town format.
Okay, is there any questions for Margaret?
Oh.
This is, this is for basically landscaping, including grass cutting and. Okay, all right. Do I, any, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And seconded.
Okay, we'll take a vote, Keith.
Subjective formatting.
Subjective.
Subjective formatting.
Well, you do that. Okay. Go ahead.
Stone I.
Hawkins I.
Okay, that's a vote. And the FY '22 reappointments, a partial slate of reappointments.
This is a partial slate tonight that includes employment positions in the town. I do want to add that there is a, a correction here. I think previously the alternate wiring, wiring inspector was. Was titled Assistant Wiring Inspector, but it is in fact an alternate wiring inspector who would only perform the duties in the absence of the electrical inspector. In the absence of the electrical inspector. So, um, that's been corrected. Um, and all the other, um, all the other jobs here are held, uh, by incumbents. Um, so they're all up for reappointment at this point in time.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Uh, is this spreadsheet correct? Cause I, I see, uh, Dave Smith being appointed to a lot of things who.
Right.
Will be not able to, I don't believe is planning on finishing out the terms as our tree warden, but he's still longer highway chief, but.
Or trench officer.
He, he needs to be appointed, um, because the term, because the appointment expires on May 31st. Um, so he does need to be appointed. Um, he, uh, upon his resignation on July 9th, he would vacate those positions. But he is going to need to be reappointed at least temporarily.
So do I hear a, a motion to, go ahead, Margaret?
If your point was to, um, appoint through, that could be changed to read July 9th, 2021.
Any one of these people could end up with something happening and resigning before the end of the year. And so.
Right. And you never know what, you know. What the situation will be. You may want to just do it till the end of, uh, the term and, um, then reappoint. Whoever is appointed to Dave's position.
He may decide to stay. Oh, well, wishful thinking.
I know.
And we're not doing the police department because we don't have their list yet, correct?
That's correct. That'll be on May 25th with all the others.
Okay. I'm fine with the list. I was just asking clarifying questions. I had no objections to any of the names in these positions. Happy that people are willing to pull on these roles.
So is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion. So moved.
Okay. Peg, do I hear a second?
I'm still looking. Um. Margaret, who's Margaret? Not, I'm not kidding. Uh. Yeah, I'm, uh.
I saw this Margaret Stone when I was.
I know. And look at where she is too. Um, yeah, I'm, um, seconded. I'm fine with the ones that we have so far.
Okay. Um, so we'll take a vote. Keith, I.
Stone eye.
Hawkins eye.
And that's unanimous.
I'll spend some time next year learning what some of these titles do, by the way. Some of them are pretty obvious titles. Some are less obvious titles.
All right. Uh, we're on to board questions and comments or liaison updates. I did not have any meetings, I don't believe, last week. Anybody else?
I'll let, I always let Scott.
I don't remember any meetings last week. Um, have we heard anything from Regal that is now open and what we're doing about their permits and licenses?
I think Margaret was going to, um.
She sent out an email, but I don't remember hearing anything back.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Which one is this?
Regal cinema.
Mary is still.
They opened Friday. Okay.
Yeah, they, they actually reopened on Friday. Um, there are some outstanding items before the board, uh, can take this up. They have a, a little bit, uh, a little bit of outstanding taxes still due. I think they've been notified about that and, uh.
Sure. They have a thousand little loose ends to open up a business that's been mothballed for almost a year.
Yeah. Mary, is this intended to come before the board on June 1st?
Whenever they get their stuff together. They actually don't have any of their licenses for this year, but they're open.
Yeah, I was planning on going to see a movie on Saturday to just see exactly what's going on, but I got distracted.
Hopefully we can get you up to like 4:30.
The Nobody Man or something. We actually picked a movie and picked it showtime and that just. The day was too nice out and suddenly it was nine o'clock. And we're like, I'm not going to a movie this late.
They'll get it together for, so what, the 25th is, I have a folder. I'm building all the feedback as it comes in for May 25th.
Okay.
Okay. Just let us know when you're ready to go. All right.
All right. Um, so I've got a few. Unfortunately, recreation has a knack of meeting when we're meeting. So I can only get them on playback, but, uh, you know what? I want to send a giant shout out to Julie. Uh, I was watching the one in April, the one in May hasn't been posted yet. She has a dynamite staff and they are. Uh, all of them are all thinking outside the box. Um, you know, they're trying to figure out how the trash gets picked up now that. Hudson disposal isn't going to pick it up and town doesn't pick it up. So they're going to reach out to the Boy Scouts, see if there's any type of special. Uh, badges, you know, that they could do to do that. Uh, they're looking at new, um. At the benches, the thing just said on bleachers. Uh, you, thank you. Yes. So they're going to look at, uh, uh, Asabet. Or they're going to look at money, maybe that's provided by some of the, um, uh, the baseball team in town. So, you know, they're looking at what else they can do to the grounds because they know that they're in horrible condition. And no one wants to rent them and no one wants to play on them. Uh, you know, they are basically a tumbleweed, you know, rolling through South Common. But, uh, I have, uh, great faith in Julie and everybody else on rec. So just wanted to send a giant shout out, uh, to them. That they are off and running and truly off and running. And Julie's been promoting an outdoor fitness program, I think on Saturdays. Uh, at some god awful hour, like it's 6:15, uh, in the morning and 8:30, you know, for the rest of us normal human beings. Um, so I've seen that posted out there. Uh, conservation, uh, just to reiterate, Steve Baird. Uh, gave him his resignation last week was his last meeting. Uh, Steve's resignation also impacts Earthwork. Uh, Earthworks Board. So not sure what conservation is going to do, uh, to send somebody there as well. And Margaret mentioned, Energy will be meeting tomorrow night at 7:30, uh, to look at the, uh, indicative pricing. I don't know if at the same time that they'll also be reviewing the meta proposal received, uh, not to exceed 12, 12.5. So, uh, that was extremely detailed. Again, Margaret, thank you for finding Beth. I don't know where she is. But if you could clone that woman three or four times, that would be most awesome.
She's done amazing things around to many, many towns, cities.
Yep. So that's it for my updates.
Hey, and, and, and another, um. Uh, thing that I want to thought maybe the board, I know Peg knows, but, um. Julie Lee has also been appointed to the regional school committee. So, um, she's, she's got her hands full.
Yeah, she does.
But good for her.
Yep, she'll do great. Orleans in good hands with, uh, with Julie. So, yeah, hats off to her.
And also with, um, Susan Henry. Okay. Um, then I think with all of our business having been taken care of, um, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Keith, I.
Stone eye.
Hawkins eye.